We're still going to switch?
Yes.
I switched with myself.
That's okay. You are Alex in all those numbers.
Okay.
You open, you go through the beginning.
Yeah, was that? We will open the 17th meeting of the fiscal year 2013. It is February 7th in Suckman's conference room. This is the Milton Planning Board. The chairman, Alex Whiteside, is not attending tonight in attendance. First, approval of past minutes. Do I skip it? Okay. We're going to defer the minutes for a moment anyways. Next item on the agenda is that in an executive session regarding the Fanday property in Hillside The motion to go into executive session will be, quote, "I moved to go into executive session to discuss litigation regarding the Fanday property in Hillside Street. Discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the planning board." So procedurally, the vote of each member of the planning board on this motion should be recorded by roll call and entered into the minutes so that if we do approve going into executive session, everyone in the room not on the planning board or council will have to leave the room. So I'll start with Mr. Kelly, Mike.
Hang on, you have to have the motion made, so I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Somebody second it.
Second.
Okay. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Innes?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? And the chair says yes also. So town council John Flynn will remain and the others will have to leave the room. Thank you. I'm not sure how long it will take, guys, so we'll let you know. We will open the 17th meeting of the fiscal year 2013. It is February 7th in Suckman's conference room. This is the Milton Planning Board. The chairman, Alex Whiteside, is not attending tonight in attendance. First, approval of past minutes. Do I skip it? Okay. We're going to defer the minutes for a moment anyways. Next item on the agenda is that in an executive session regarding the Fanday property in Hillside Street. The motion to go into executive session will be, quote, "I moved to go into executive session to discuss litigation regarding the Fanday property in Hillside Street. Discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the planning board." So procedurally, the vote of each member of the planning board on this motion should be recorded by roll call and entered into the minutes so that if we do approve going into executive session, everyone in the room not on the planning board or council will have to leave the room. So I'll start with Mr. Kelly, Mike.
Hang on, you have to have the motion made, so I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Somebody second it.
Second.
Okay. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Innes?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? And the chair says yes also. So town council John Flynn will remain and the others will have to leave the room. Thank you. I'm not sure how long it will take, guys, so we'll let you know. Okay. I think we're on. So we've just come out of executive session and the next item on the agenda, the modified agenda, is we'll do number five, new business approval not required. Does the attorney want to come forward, please? Give us a little background on this, if you don't mind, Marion.
I did want to start out, and I will discuss to a certain extent the application, but it's actually our intention tonight to ask to withdraw without prejudice because there's a correction that needs to be made in the A&R plan. And it's basically a matter of labeling or identifying the remaining lot and where it goes and what it belongs to. So I think that the best way to do that is to withdraw our application. I'm hoping you'll give us back our $500 deposit, but that we would then very quickly, you know, have a conference and figure out exactly how we want to designate the lot that remains, this little sliver of a lot that remains after this creation of the A&R so that it's done in a correct and legal fashion. And I do believe that we could be back with this application as soon as the 14th if, but I, you know, we do have to redraw the plan and we have to make sure that it's done correctly. So I can tell you that if you accept our withdrawal without prejudice, that we would be refiling, but with a revised plan. We probably will refile in the next few days. And so if the board wanted to consider a discussion on the 14th, we might be ready to do that. But since I don't know for sure when we're going to file it, I can't guarantee that that's going to happen, and so it would be up to you when, of course, you know, when you can schedule it for a discussion. It's, I mean, you know, if there is, if there are questions other than that question, I suppose I could try to answer them.
Just a general question?
Mm-hmm.
Who discovered that there was an error in the plan? Was it your own internal?
I actually wasn't sure how to handle that sliver, that remaining sliver. And I was also told by Bill Clark this afternoon that town council had raised an issue about it. So, you know, I don't see any point in going forward with a plan that, the way that lot is designated, it says it's a non-buildable lot. That's probably not enough for an A&R plan because it sounds like you can't leave a piece of land like that. And the intention is, and the understanding that we have is, it has to be combined with the rest of the land that belongs to the applicant. But the way that's shown on the plan is very important because the plan's recorded at the registry. And people have to be able to look at the plan and know exactly what this lot means and what the remaining land of the applicant can be used for. And you're not allowed to create a non-buildable lot when you do an A&R subdivision. That much I'm aware of, but in terms of what to call it, I wasn't sure what to call it, and neither was Bob Hannigan. So I think the best thing is to go back and make sure that we're doing it the right way. And if you, you know, if you have any other comments of that nature that we should be attending to, I'd certainly be happy to do that. Otherwise, we probably should just come back and have our discussion when we're ready.
Any questions from the board?
No, that makes sense.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Bobrowski for the Corliss family. My office is in Concord. It's my understanding from looking at the A&R, and I'll rely upon Attorney McGettrick to correct me if I'm wrong, that the proposed frontage is on Ford Ranch Road, but the access to the lot will be off the driveway that constitutes the Corliss driveway. Is that correct?
The legal frontage is on Ford Ranch Road. The intention is to try to use the driveway to get to the lot, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, on behalf of the planning board of Dayton, had the exact case. That was Gates versus Planning Board of Dayton, in which a gentleman had similar situation. He had a frontage on Tremont Street in a wet area behind it. Rather than bridge the wet, he decided to come in the back door, as is the proposal here. And the appeals court ruled back in the 90s, I believe, that that was impermissible. And I have the case teed up on my email. And if Mr. Clark would be kind enough to give me his email address, or he can type it in himself and just hit send, you'll all have the case so that you can read it. But the court in that case asked the question, is the proposed, is the frontage illusory? I recall very well having Otis Dyer, the engineer for the applicant, on the witness stand at the trial, and I said, "Otis, are you going to build a bridge?" And he said, "No, no, Mark, I'm going to come in the back way." And that's why he lost the case. So unless you're coming in through your frontage, you can't endorse it with an A&R. The two cases could not be more alike.
I would like to address that when I come back, but I am familiar with the case and I certainly do have.
But we-
You know, I have an argument that I would present to the board, but I do want to go back and look at the arrangement of the lots first and make sure we have a legally drawn plan.
Thought it'd give us a chance to review the other case before we get to the-
Mr. Bobrowski, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Bobrowski?
No, none on this topic, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So you're done for the evening?
I can't multitask here, especially when technology is involved, but I understood-
We have the scenic road question, too.
Yes, I understood that was on the agenda.
Okay.
So we're, wait, just, we're allowing her to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have to have a motion on that, or does it simply happen? Because I'm fine with simply happen.
We can do it.
I just want to make sure we hit the right decision.
I would ask that the board take a vote to allow-
Motion.
Okay, so I move that we allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. You're second?
Oh, I thought you were second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Marion.
Thank you.
Now, don't go away.
Okay.
The scenic road stone wall, want to talk about that?
Yes, I'm happy to talk about that. I've also been informed that town council feels that you did not fail to make a decision in this case, that you simply haven't made a decision yet. And I understand this is an application, not a special permit. I understand that it's different, and I understand, you know, what his reasoning was, and I don't really have an objection to that. I wanted to see some closure on the issue, and so this is the way I tried to bring it about. What I will say to you on that is, if you are going to follow that advice from town council, then I assume that you consider this still to be an open application. Is that correct? Is that what the board's going to do?
Please phrase the question, Marion. One more time.
Is the board going to handle this as an open scenic roads application? As town council has advised, you can, because you haven't made a decision yet.
Any comment on that?
We-
That sounds reasonable, yes. Since that's town council's advice, I think we could follow that.
I think, yeah, he was indicating it was considered a logical correct.
Okay. Well, I did write a letter to you before I heard of town council's decision. And so do you have that in front of you?
The one dated February 7?
The one you're saying? Really don't need to-
Yes, yes. I do, thank you. My pleasure. I'm not going to read the beginning because that talks about the constructive approval, but what I have determined in reviewing once again this scenic roads application is that I do not believe that we had to apply for a scenic roads approval for this. And I explained this, but I'm going to go through it so everyone knows what I'm talking about. And we're considering, because of that, asking to withdraw the application again without prejudice. But I'd be happy to discuss that if you have a different view. What I did was I went back and first read, well, the applicable statutes and regulations are Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15. The first thing that says that the towns can designate scenic ways, and Milton has designated Hillside Street as a scenic way. And then Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15 goes on to say, "Once a town has so designated a road, repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees in the road," and that's my parentheses, "or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portions thereof, except with prior written consent of the planning board." And then the statute goes on to say that a town can promulgate a bylaw regulation and so forth, which Milton has done. And Milton has scenic road regulations. These regulations define when an application is required. When a scenic road is being repaired, maintained, reconstructed, or paved is defined in Section 13.1.2 as any work done within the right-of-way which was not physically commenced at the time the road was designated as a scenic road, and construction insofar as it takes place within the right-of-way. This Hamilton Fanday application put in March 29, 2012, sought to pave the outside edge of the existing driveway and to widen the driveway entrance by eight feet on the right side. This would involve repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving. Therefore, the application has to be looked at as to whether it falls within the regulated activities of Milton's scenic road regulations. But the driveway widening proposed required the removal of approximately eight linear feet of stone wall on the right side of the driveway. The written application describes up to eight feet of stone wall removal on either side of the driveway entrance, but the plan submitted shows driveway width increase only on the right side of eight feet. Either way, stone wall removal of 16 feet or stone wall removal of eight feet is within the threshold of 18 linear feet established in Milton's scenic road bylaw, below which you do not have to apply for approval. So this application does not require a scenic road approval from the planning board. Furthermore, the actual paving or alteration of the width of the driveway entrance in the public way does not require scenic road approval. Neither the Mass. General Law nor the Milton Regulation requires approval of the repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work. That is merely the trigger for a review of whether approval is required of the removal of stone walls or of trees. And there was no request in this application to remove trees in the scenic way. So it's my conclusion that we didn't need to apply for this approval. At the time we applied, you know, I didn't really understand why we had to, but I was told that I had to, so we put it into the application. And so my view hasn't really changed, but I'm not sure whether this is a different interpretation than the planning board has taken in the past, or whether everyone was just being extra cautious in including this and having us included in the application.
Any comment?
I just, I didn't follow what you said at the end there in the sense that you said you applied, but then you said the planning board required you to apply?
Well, my, you know, my instructions from the town planner were that I needed to apply for scenic road permit.
From the town planner?
And I will say also that Bob Hannigan thought we might have to apply for scenic road permit. I mean, it wasn't as if it was all that clear at the time. And since I was new to this procedure, I, I'm just telling you, I said, "Fine, we'll apply." But now that it's so much, so much time has gone on, and because of this constructive approval issue, I went back and read the statute and read the regulations numerous times. And this is what I think is the correct application of the regulations. I'd be happy to hear any discussion or-
So because Marion referenced the regulations, I just pulled them up, and I can hand them around. And I'm looking, it's on page 34 of my version, which is the one that was adopted May, sorry, April 1, 2004. And under 13.1.4, tearing down or destruction of stone walls, it says, "Tearing down or destruction of stone walls shall mean the destruction of more than 18 linear feet of stone wall involving more than one cubic foot of wall material per linear foot above existing grade, but shall not be construed to include temporary removal and replacement at the same location with the same materials if a bond has been posted to guarantee replacement within 90 days of removal." And since I just read that, I'm happy to pass it around to anybody who wants to see it. Mike?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing it.
Absolutely. It's a startling thing. And the whole scenic, oh, okay. There you go.
Go. Open. Anything?
By that paragraph, I would tend to agree, but I'd have to, I, you know, I don't have the answer for you personally. I'd have to investigate-
So my suggestion was that if you give me permission to withdraw that part of the application without prejudice, it means that if we come to some resolution of this somehow in the future and we, and you conclude that I need it, or rather, the applicant needs it, then I would have to file an application for approval. I would have to file a new one. But as long as you let me withdraw without prejudice, I believe I would be able to do that. I mean, this isn't an application for a special permit or a variance, but that's the procedure that you would use, so that's what I'm asking for.
I'm comfortable with it. Any comments from the audience? No.
It doesn't seem to apply because it's less than the 18 feet, so I don't have an issue with it.
No comment from the audience? Okay. Mr. Cor-
Not sure, I heard very well. This is an additional 18 feet? Is-
No. What our application asked for was to be able to remove up to, the plan, the actual plan that was drawn, shows a removal of up to 18 feet of stone wall on the right side of the driveway. That's to allow widening the driveway entrance.
Up to eight or 18?
Eight.
Okay, sorry. Missed her.
Now, in the narrative that we wrote that went with the scenic road application, we asked for the ability to widen up to eight feet on either side of the driveway. That would mean potentially 16 feet of stone wall. Milton Scenic Road regulations say that if you remove, if you want to remove more than 18 linear feet of stone wall, you have to get approval from the planning board.
Right.
We weren't proposing more than 18 feet, and so-
My contention is you're not looking at the original break. There's a, there's a break in the law now.
Right. And that doesn't, that's not what the bylaw, well, my interpretation of the scenic road regulation is that they're talking about removal of stone wall that exists. There is no stone wall because of the driveway there already.
You can't keep-
Jefferson, will you come forward, please?
I'm sorry.
You need to get on the microphone so that the cameras and mics can pick you up.
I'll yield my position if you want. Sit here.
I'm sorry, I don't hear well. But it seems to me you can't just keep taking less than 18 feet. I mean, there's a good break in the wall now. Now we're taking another 16 feet and can, you know.
We're eight feet. The proposal was eight feet, and according to the planning board's rules and regulations, if it's less than 18 feet, then it would not come under our jurisdiction.
I understand, but that's an original.
Would we save some time here? And Mrs. McGettrick, would you correct me when I'm wrong? I think what Mrs. McGettrick has said, that she, right now, would just like to withdraw. And if she comes back and we discover in the regulations that she needs approval, she will resubmit for approval. So if we decide that without prejudice, Mrs. McGettrick can withdraw tonight, nothing's going to happen at this point.
Right. Thank you. I, on my end, I have to go home to my mother, who has proposed, prepared this letter here. And if I may, I'll just read it, just a couple of sentences. "I submit this letter to respectfully ask that you deny the pending application to expand the stone wall opening between 145 and 159 Hillside Street. During my tenure as chairman of the Milton Historic Commission, the Hillside Street Scotts Woods District was added to the National Historic Register. It is one of several districts contributing to the town's national historic significance. A scenic road is treasured by its Hillside Street residents, and there is neighborhood consensus to have it remain unchanged. Ours is a unique setting among Milton's many beautiful locations. Two of the properties contributing to the Scotts Woods Historic District are bordered by this historic stone wall and will be irreparably impacted by any of the proposed alterations. I urge the planning board to deny the application." Now I can go home.
Okay.
I think I'd like to, I think I have a different interpretation from Mike, and I just want to check to make sure which one of us is right. Mike had said if we allow withdrawal without prejudice, nothing would happen. My interpretation is that anything up to 18 feet can happen because under 18 feet is not within the jurisdiction of the planning board. So they could widen the eight feet that they have proposed without permission from the planning board.
I understand.
Okay, I'm just making sure that, because it came across.
Again, but that's just the interpretation presently by Mrs. McGettrick. I don't think other parties have had the opportunity to reinvestigate and see that that interpretation, not disparaging Mrs. McGettrick's opinion, but they could be, in further, you talked about paving, and yet the paragraph I looked at didn't address paving. I'm sure someplace it does address paving, so there's more to it than we presently have in front of us right now.
Just to reiterate, now, sit down. We're just, I understand there's an incremental allowance, but you can't just keep having incremental allowances. There has to be some sort of finite width, I would think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Marion?
If I could just add, again, I understand, you know, what Mr. Jefferson is saying. The scenic road regulations and the state law talks about the difference between what was in existence when the road was designated as a scenic road and changes that are going to be made after that. Our own, and the changes relate to tree removal and stone wall removal, because those are aspects of what makes a road scenic. It makes sense. Our regulations are written so that if you are going to remove less than 18 linear feet of stone wall, you don't need permission from the planning board. That's my interpretation. There is no requirement for approval of paving or construction in the road. And I believe, even I didn't really read this properly when I first looked at it, because you see that, the wording about paving, and you just sort of think that's what it means. But careful reading will show that that's simply the threshold that puts you under the purview of the scenic road bylaw, of state law, scenic road state law, and also, since the town has adopted it, of our regulations. And once you, that's what establishes that you, that the town has the right to tell you you can or cannot remove beyond a certain amount of stone wall. You cannot remove trees that are in the scenic road. So that, that's where it is. That's my interpretation.
Mr. Jefferson, to his point, again, I think he makes a good point in the fact that it has to be finite. You can't say, "Well, we're going to do eight feet this year, and eight feet next year, and eight feet..." So, as well, you made a good point. When it was designated a scenic road, and again, this is what I mean by we don't have everything in front of us tonight. When it was designated a scenic road, if we find that 10 feet have already been removed after the fact that it was designated a scenic road, maybe that would limit the 18 feet going further. Maybe that would say, "Well, now, now you only have eight feet left," or something to that effect.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, I don't, I don't even know whether that's the way I would read the regulations. I'd have to think about that. I'm not aware. It's an old driveway, so we know it's been used since around 1946. And you obviously, I also, it was accessed into farm area in the back, and so I don't know.
It would just seem silly that if it didn't have some baseline establishment, because otherwise, I think, again, Mr. Jefferson made a good point, four feet this year and 12 feet next year. As long as we stay on 18, we can get the whole thing out of there soon.
Right. Yes. And, you know, that's right, and there are other criteria in the regulations. For example, public safety is an issue the planning board can look at.
The first one's not the second one.
If it's a good thing to do for public safety reasons, they can still consider allowing more than 18 feet. So I do agree. I don't think it's totally simple. I, I just feel that, and hopefully you agree, that if we are allowed to withdraw it without prejudice, we can bring back an application if we need one for any purpose. And baseline is, we were only asking for eight feet to begin with, and 18 feet is the required distance. So I haven't found any evidence that, you know, a stone wall has been removed in the past since we adopted the bylaw, but if anyone can find anything like that, I'd certainly be interested, so.
Thank you, Marion.
You want a motion again?
Yes, please.
Okay. So then I will move that we allow the applicant to withdraw the scenic road application without prejudice.
Check it.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous.
Thank you. And of course, since you're doing this, I'll have to, you know, file a letter with the town clerk, telling her that I'm withdrawing my so-called constructive approval letter. I would also have accepted town council's opinion on that anyway, and if you'd wanted to, we could have gone into, at some point, into a hearing process. Anything else that I need to do?
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this moment? We do have on the agenda citizens speak on any topic other than what's on the agenda. Anybody for that tonight? Any other business? Clark?
You have on your agenda a discussion of an alternative, sorry, an associate member.
Right. Okay, sorry. Yep.
There was supposed to be either a person or a small contingent going down to the Town Government Study Committee to discuss the same. I know that this was Mr. Whiteside's issue to discuss. I know that that committee is meeting now. Does somebody from here want to go down and have that discussion with them?
I think Mrs. Innes would like to be down.
Who was the committee that's meeting right now?
Town Government Study Committee.
They're the ones that propose that we have the-
Their exclusive purpose of meeting tonight, to see if they want to add a person to the planning board?
That's not their only thing to discuss. That's not their only thing to discuss. This was something that was set up by Mr. Whiteside and that committee to have a discussion tonight.
And they didn't want to come up here?
I, I would think that we moved to postpone it until Mr. Whiteside's back.
Second.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
A full board should be here to discuss.
I'll go down, I'll go down to tell them that, okay?
Bye.
Yeah, and if they want to ask, add questions, I think that's reasonable. I don't like the idea of adjourning the whole meeting down there.
No, no.
That's why I asked a question, if that was their only purpose, if that's their only-
Yeah, exactly.
Honestly, I feel as though it shouldn't be discussed at all until we meet as a full board again, and in the elected chairman, with due respect to Mr. Duffy-
Right.
-who's only recused himself on particular matters, certainly hasn't recused himself on this.
Absolutely, no. I, I agree with you. I think my concern is whenever we have it, having to adjourn our meeting, which is being televised, to go to a non-televised meeting, I think that makes it very difficult for, I mean, I know, you know, it's not like the whole town's watching us, but I think it's very difficult. It's like, why are the planning board leaving their own meeting and going down somewhere else?
Or someone can paraphrase why.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't know.
Your explanation for Mr. Duffy leaving, that's fine, but I don't think, I don't think, and again, nothing directed to Mr. Duffy specifically-
Right.
-but I don't think anybody from the planning board should go down and discuss it tonight.
I'm not going to.
I did give you-
I am, I am, I am not going down to discuss it.
Just to let them, give them the courtesy.
Give them our apologies.
I believe you have this on your-
Hang on, we're all interrupting Ed. Ed, I'm sorry, finish your sentence.
No, it's fine, it's fine. I'm going down to talk to the people about why Alex is not down there, or why nobody's down there. We're adjourning this meeting. Mr. Whiteside is not attending, in attendance, therefore, we apologize, we reschedule.
Okay, then that's perfect. That's absolutely perfect, yeah.
I think you actually took the vote at your last meeting to, about this particular issue.
You mean about whether we're going to meet with them?
Explain to us when we took the vote and how we voted. Where's the minutes? I'd like to see the minutes.
We don't have them.
We don't have them.
I thought, I thought it was a general discussion.
I thought, I thought, I thought what we'd said is that we'd be happy to discuss it with them. I don't know that we voted that we would all go down in one body.
No, no.
Yeah, exactly.
To have that discussion with them.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think we necessarily voted.
I didn't think we said we'd be glad to go down, but I will go down.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Do you have anything else?
I gave you in your packet Citizen Planet Training Collaborative.
Yay.
So far, Emily's the only one who's signed up. I know Alex has expressed some interest, he was looking at a little Italian restaurant in Worcester that he likes to go to. His mom said he wouldn't go.
What's the date, Bill?
He's looking into it. Saturday, March 16. We actually have money in our budget for that.
Yeah.
For the dinner, too?
It's a lunch, yeah. Oh, no, you mean at the, at the Italian restaurant. Yeah, that's not in our budget.
Okay, this is-
It's very useful.
February 14.
Yes.
You have on your agenda, you're going to be discussing the assisted living, assisted living residence development.
Right.
The zoning for that.
Which was in our packet, right?
Yep. You're going to be discussing a amended site plan approval for the installation of a backup gas-powered generator for 17 Canton Ave. And-
Bill, we stopped there, Bill? Is that the building that's being built at the moment?
The one that we have issues on?
Yes, yes, which is why we're coming back. I have taken in the, each of the abutters will be noticed of the meeting. So that's one for you.
Have you discussed that with Mr. Prondeck at all?
Yes, I have discussed the building with Mr. Prondeck.
The generator, have you discussed that with?
I've showed it to him. I haven't heard him come back with any particular-
Noise.
Can you email us or put in our packet for next week our final decision on 17 Canton Ave? I found all my copies of the drafts, but I didn't find the final decision.
Yep.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
I have one more thing that I want to put on there, and that is-
Should that be found?
On new business for discussion purposes.
Copy so we can read it.
The new proposed use for the Sandy's Rectory Site is for a hospice. And that hospice building will be discussed. You'll see the, the current proposed plan for the building, explaining what a hospice is, what it does, what the impacts are, how big it is, what it potentially will look like, potentially.
Does that come under our jurisdiction?
No, you do not get it.
What are appeals?
You don't get anything, it's going to the zoning board of appeals.
So this is merely a presentation of what's happening?
This is merely a presentation to the planning board on the 14th. They'll go to the selectmen on the 28th. And they're just being informative.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify whether it was a judgment or an informative.
I miss anything? Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? Not, I'll, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Check it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody in the audience for being well behaved this morning.
Mikes. Mikes.